Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham's Attorney Board of Appeals for tonight's meeting, May 27. It is 6:00 or 8:00 PM, and for the record, we're doing it on Zoom online. So we're not physically at the Town Hall. We're gonna call the meeting to order. I'll make a roll call. We have online our clerk, Jim Akabachi, one of our members, Veronica Devenese, and Mr. Walter Cruz. Also, we have present our town planner, Ken Buckland. Have some preliminary business to do. Discussion and possible vote regarding use of electronic signature on permits. Okay, Ken, just give us quick what's that?
It's an adoption of state law that allows you to do electronic signatures, so you don't have to come into Town Hall to sign documents that you approve.
Okay, what's the wish of the board, Jim?
So I make a motion that we accept as a motion, as presented in the email that Ken sent yesterday.
All right, so I have a motion to grant by Jim. Do I have a second?
A second, that.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nazir, you want to do roll call votes?
What's up, buddy? I didn't make a roll call?
No, you wrote your name out to people and asked them to...
Everybody would make yes or no? I don't have to say all in favor?
I think you say each person's name to get their answer.
There you go.
For Ken.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So Jim made the motion. All in favor, say aye. Nazir, aye.
Veronica, aye.
Aye.
Jake, say your name.
Jacob Morrison. Aye.
There you go.
And Walter, I guess we gotta say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. So 5-0-0.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Perhaps we should have numbers in order of who's gonna say aye or nay for every vote. We have a lot of voting to do.
Okay, so we're gonna start first. Jim, I'm gonna like make it easy for me, like, mount a clockwise. Jim, Jake a second. Veronica, third. Myself. Sorry, Walter, you're last.
That's fine.
Okay, here we go. Everybody get their numbers, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, we go to the subject B, notice of project of change woodland cove comprehensive permit. The code of patterns 3102 Cranberry Highway, modification of project phasing. All right, who we have here? Mrs. Quirk?
Mr. Freeman is going to present.
Peter Freeman is here. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Counselor Hawaii.
Thank you. Good thanks. And I land her is, so she's on this from here. And Dominique Rinaldi from BSCD Engineer. So in essence, without going through everything I said in the letter, but we believe we're requesting, what we're requesting are insubstantial changes under the regulations. The essence is that phasing is being changed, which the two substantive things are things that you had actually wanted during the hearing process. It's gonna be changed so that Phase 1 will now include the construction of the community building and will also provide access to Cranberry Highway and to Redbrook Road. So those are two really positive changes. For the rest of the explanation, I'll just say something brief. We've listed the dimensional table in a sheet, and it shows what the new configurations are. They're the same types of waivers, just dimensional. We didn't outlet any specific waiver, but I want to be clear that that would be part and parcel. If you approve this request and that table, then they would be waivers to those dimensional parts of the bylaw. And the one that I picked out that is not much, but previously on the lot coverage, and Dom, correct me if I'm wrong. Previously, on the lot coverage, we complied with a maximum 65%. Now for lots 2, now for lots 2 and 3, we're just slightly over that 65%. Is that correct, Dom?
Yes, that is correct. For the record, Dominic Rinaldi with the BSC Group, civil engineers and surveyors for the project. As Peter was saying, that is correct, and that is a function of, if you want, in a minute, I can show you a little bit more detail. Lots 2 and 3, the project hasn't changed, but lots 2 and 3 have gotten smaller.
And so related, and I don't think it's significant, but you would previously granted a waiver so that one of the lots, I think it was Lot 1, had no frontage, and that waiver was granted. So same B, Dom will more specifically explain. Now, I believe, Lot 2 have no frontage. And the rest, you know, of the dimensional changes are all shown, as those are on that chart. So that's in essence what we're here for. I thought I would then have Mark from Dakota just explain to you why the changes have been made and update you on progress for the project, and then let Dom, you know, walk you through the plans.
All right. Mr. Freeman, if I may, quick, just to make it like a little bit more clear. So what are you asking us now? You wanna build Phase 1. You want the clubhouse to be built now, or the community center? You're gonna get rid of the motel, correct, as Phase 1?
I can't remember if that's already a condition. We're not seeking...
It is. Yes, it was, I recall.
Yeah, we're not seeking any change on that, so the yes, that will happen.
Okay, and you're gonna make an entrance from Redbrook Road and the highway?
Yep.
And you want to do, and you say in the project, a slightly smaller on Lot 2, on Lot 3, but you're saying you need, you're above the 65% coverage. How's that work if they're smaller?
Well, I think it's the same number. Well, I'll let Dominique explain that technicality with the building, the clubhouse being changed around, and I guess there's two of the lots are a little smaller, so if they have the same building coverage but a smaller lot, that it increases the coverage ratio.
Yeah, but why, if they, I don't understand if they're smaller, why you need a more impervious place? If Dominique can answer.
Sure, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So if I could, it might help if I do a screen share?
Yes, if you can, yeah, because I don't have the plan.
Yep, that's quite all right. Is everybody able to see my screen now?
Yeah.
So this is the revised phasing plan that we submitted in, I believe, March. Versus the, this is the approved plan, the previously approved plan. So as you can see in the previously approved plan, Phase 1 is in this area here, this hatch, this striped hatch. Phase 2 is sort of the solid hatch, and Phase 3 is the, we'll call it dots. And that was because Phase 2 included the clubhouse, which was located here. So if I scroll through real quick, that was what was planned for Phase 1. Phase 2 included the community building, clubhouse, whatever you wanna call it. In the proposed revision, make sure I bring up the right one, you can see Phase 1, same hatching pattern, is a lot bigger. And Phase 2 and Phase 3 have both lost some of the land. And the reason for that is, in order to bring the clubhouse in, community building into Phase 1 and provide the actual vehicular access and four parking spaces that were approved as a condition of the comprehensive permit, we plan to build the driveway connection out to Redbrook Road in order to avoid the need for any easements or what have you with the remaining land. Even on a temporary basis, we're proposing to include all of that land in Phase 1.
So what?
So Phase 1 got a lot bigger, and what happens is because Phase 2, effectively, other than the community building, it effectively still has the same amount of pavement. The buildings haven't changed, the parking and driveways that are gonna be provided hasn't changed. But the lot area got a lot smaller. Therefore, the lot coverage went up. And the same with Phase 3, which used to go out to include this area to Redbrook Road, is now just this portion. But again, has effectively the same amount of impervious surface, just in a smaller space.
All right, so basically, everything, it's matter of paperwork. So basically, the numbers the same, footage the same, everything's the same. It's a matter of changing it on paper?
Yes, and that's why the overall project, the coverage area hasn't changed. It just ends up going slightly different.
Okay, and you taking into consideration the construction of the highway? So you're incorporating that with this, because you know the highway's coming?
Yep, yes.
All right, I'm gonna start quick by questions. Jim?
Okay, I got a couple of questions. I think I understand. If we look at, if we make a, when people were there, it's all, nothing is really changed.
Correct.
The lines around so the clubhouse can be built now. Both entrances can be built now. I think we're superior. My question. What was sent to me just today? It said 174 units were approved. And I thought we were 150.
Oh, yeah, I think I thought if I didn't send it, I apologize. Buckland had that out and consider it not an attempt to get some more units. We know it was 150. It goes by what the permit said, so I apologize.
So would you need to get it? The very first page of the plan, this meeting, and I think it's the first paragraph identifies a 174. Why? 174 unit development. We just need to cross out 174.
Yeah. It's 150, and as we, I think...
To make it easier to everyone, the substance of the whole permit is not changing.
Correct.
All right, so I'm gonna pass it to Jake. Jim, do you have anything else? Jake?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Veronica? She's amusing.
No, I don't have any questions.
Walter, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, anyone in the audience or who's online would like to comment on that? Ellis here for this matter? Mr. Billy Ellis?
Yes, sir.
Are you for this matter?
No.
Would you like to speak on this?
No, I don't. I'm on the agenda anyways.
Okay, very well. All right, Ken, what's your input on that?
This is fine. You have to just do, as you said, it's the same substance of the application as before. There's no change in the development project. It's just an issue of phasing and access and utilities and the subdivision itself.
Okay, so I guess Jimmy, so move maybe?
Yeah, I make the motion that we accept the proposal as presented, with the exception of the 150 versus the 170.
Jimmy, just say your name.
Jim Akabachi.
All right, Jake, say your name and say what you wish.
Aye, Jake Morrison. One second.
Okay, so it's second by Jake Morrison. All in favor, say their name and say yes or nay.
Veronica, aye, in favor.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Aye.
Jake? Say your name and aye or nay. Myself, Nazir Al Kala, say aye. Walter?
I'm last, Walter Cruz, aye.
Okay, very good. 5-0-0.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just point out, I don't think it needs a new vote, but I'll leave that to you. Because you've now approved the changes, part of it is requesting that you sign, as you had previously, that you sign this new division plan. I don't know if Dom had submitted a plan with the endorsement block for you folks to sign it, but Dom, I'm correct, we do need that to be done, right?
Yes, correct. That's the plan of land that actually creates the lots. We will submit a, we'll get you a stamped and signed copy. We're waiting to make sure this got approved before we did so.
So, okay, very good. We still have to all agree before we sign, right? So we do need a vote, right?
Yeah, that's why I pointed it out now. I think it, you know, it's implicit, but let's be explicit. Thank you.
Okay. So, and you need another vote for anything?
Yeah, yeah, no, I land, no, we don't, just that, just approving the endorsement of the plan.
Okay, Ken, we good with this, right?
Yes, we are.
All right, very well. Thank you, thanks, Counselor. Thank you, Dominic.
Take a vote on that? I thought you were gonna take a vote on the plan endorsement.
Oh, and then, okay, let's follow vote, okay. Jim, make a motion on, what's that plan? So move. So I have, Jimmy, your name. Oh, I'm sorry, I called them. I have a second on the endorsement of the plan. Say your name, Jake. So I have a second. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye with your name.
Jim?
Jake Morrison, aye.
Veronica Devenese, aye.
Myself, Nazir Al Kala, say aye.
Walter Cruz, aye.
Okay, very well. 5-0-0 to endorse the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Very well, thank you.
Have a great night.
All right, the third thing on the agenda, 2416 Cranberry Highway, minor modification of site plan. Case 13-19, who we have here for?
Thank you. Jim Bernardino with Bowler Engineering, representing the applicant tonight. We also have Tom Healy, he's on the line from Nerea Energy. Answer any questions there. And we also have a traffic consultant available for any type of questions, should they come up regarding, you know, traffic and the like. She's Heather Montecup from GPI. I'm gonna share my screen real briefly and just give a quick recap as to where things were left off the last time we met, probably in early March. There is maybe three minor items that were remaining for a minor site plan modification for 2416 Cranberry Highway. If you recall, the proposal was to change the building footprint from just over 30, 5,300 square foot gross floor area C score to a 5,600 square foot convenience store. Likewise, there was a modification to the number of fuel dispensers that was proposed. We increased that from five, which was previously approved, up to six. The remaining comments that were unanswered at the conclusion of the last time we met was regarding architecture. The approval had more of a colonial style building, and the applicant is providing somewhat more of a modern sleek building. What we did was, we took a look at the surrounding neighborhood. As you can see, the proposed developed area is in this area here, which is where the convenience store would be located. We went out and put an exhibit together that outlined some recent buildings, the dental store, dental office, existing Wendy's, well, as Autozone in Aldi. We took a look at the surrounding neighborhood and the architecture that is currently exist in those locations. If you look in the middle of this exhibit that we prepared, this is the elevation that the applicant is seeking approval for as part of the minor modification. Left is the new Wendy's, which has the straight lines, locked windows, which we're kind of mimicking, and on the proposed architecture. Likewise, very similar types of building components and elements as it relates to the area of the Autozone, the dental building, dental office in the bottom right corner that was currently under construction, and then the existing Aldi building. So we believe, in comparison to the surrounding neighborhoods, we believe that our proposed architecture is consistent and in harmony with the, you know, the surrounding neighborhood and developments. The other item that was outstanding at the conclusion of our last meeting that we had was that we need to coordinate some with the towns engineering consultant, Charlie Rowley, which we have done so. We prepared a complete set of engineering plans, which was inclusive of updated site lighting, grading, utilities and the like as it relates to the improvement or modifications that are being proposed. We received an email maybe early to mid-April from Charlie saying that he had no issues with the revised plan or comments at that time, which we still believe to be appropriate, because nothing has changed since that time. But he did note that we were adding that six dispenser. We were increasing it from five to six. And mentioned that that would be a decision that the board we need to make. And that kind of rolls into the last comment that the board asked us to take a look at when we met, was how does the addition of this six fencing aisle, how does that affect traffic and safety concerns on the site? We, Heather Montecup, as I mentioned on the, on this chat as well, and we looked at the proposed change, not only to the six fuel dispenser, but as well as the increased building square footage, and provided an updated traffic memo outlining what impacts that this change had. Very minor impacts, and they've actually been incorporated with updated off-site improvements that are currently been prepared and under review. So DOT had any initial concerns with this. They're still being reviewed, but the changes that have been made, that increased the square footage as well as the fuel dispensers, all have, you know, can be addressed in these off-site improvements that are currently underway and incorporate, and have been incorporated into that traffic study and evaluation. You know, with that, I'll turn it back over to the board for questions and comments. We said we do have Heather to answer any traffic concerns related to impacts of the proposed modifications. And, you know, myself from the civil site engineering side, and Tom Healy from Nerea, the type of operation the board may have. So with that, I can turn it back over to you. I could obviously share my screen again, if you'd be, but for the moment, I'm gonna stop sharing so we all can see everybody's pretty.
Okay, very well. Does everyone recall this minor modification? They came to change the architectural, and board had agreed to, I guess, the... The board agreed to change the looks of it. Do you guys recall that?
Yes.
Okay, Veronica, you recall that?
I do recall the project, but I think it was also an addition of a pump that was under question.
Right, and they, and Mr. Bernardino, you said you, a town engineer was fine with it? You passed it to him?
Um, we relayed the information that we prepared to the town engineer, and ultimately, he was fine with the... But did mention that, as it relates to the additional of the six pumps, he would defer that decision to the board. As a result of the question and the concern that came up from it, we did perform a engineering analysis from our traffic consultants to address or evaluate any of the... Would arise from a slightly larger building in the additional, in the addition of a pump. And that data has been included on the mitigation package that, you know, is in front of DOT in the roadway. There's some minor signal modifications or just minor timing of what was being proposed, timing changes. So with that, we believe we've addressed the impact as it relates to the building square footage and the added pump. As far as the specific impacts, Heather Montecup from GPI can answer any specific questions regarding that.
Let me pass it to the board for quick questions. Jimmy, you have questions?
I'm fine with everything, except that I still, I still understand the reason they want the six.
Okay, Jake, what do you think?
I'm okay with everything, what they propose, I'm okay with that.
Veronica?
I actually, I preferred the five pumps. I thought there was a lot more maneuverability around that area, myself.
Okay, Walter?
Call me.
What do you think of that?
I'm gonna agree with Veronica. I remember, I remember the project, and I thought we had, there was an issue with the pump for getting in there. So, I mean, except for, everything else, I'm fine with.
So, Deish, you're saying the pump? The additional pump, right, Walter?
What's that?
So you have, I, so what I'm hearing, Jim, Veronica, and Walter have an issue with the additional pump? Dispenser?
This is Walter Cruz. I had thought we had asked before for a sweat pass analysis so we could see if the vehicle, if it wasn't a problem, then I'm fine with it.
Okay. So we gotta hear from the traffic engineer and see what they, kind of, some sense to put there.
I may regarding the sweet path is, our plan set did include a traffic sweet path analysis for the fuel delivery trucks. I'll share my screen real quickly on that. So that was sheet C14 of the revised set that was submitted to the board. And we ultimately, you have the site coming in, we'll get around the site and come back out safely. This was reviewed by the fire department as well, and they took no exception to the access that was provided. The fuel delivery as well as the fire truck, we back that has no funny maneuvering on the site.
All right. Can the traffic engineer tell us a few things, what she find out, or he?
Yes. Hello, for the record, I'm Heather Monica with Greeman Peterson GPI, and we are the traffic engineers for the proposed change on the project. Just like Jim had mentioned, the truck can maneuver around the site with the extra pumps. But in addition, typically for passenger cars, two-way flow can be accommodated with 24-foot aisles, which I think, I know not labeled on the plan. It clearly looks like that is accommodated. I know the dimensions aren't there to show you, but I'm sure that Jim can confirm that. Yes, the site does generate more traffic with the additional pumps. That's what we base traffic on, but as Jim had mentioned, the off-street, off-site improvements that we're proposing, which is widening of tow road and some signal timing modifications at that signalized intersection. We have just submitted 75 slash 100% plans to MassDOT with these changes, the bigger building, the additional pump, as well as the signal timing modifications to MassDOT for review. And that, this site plan that is before you is currently before them as well for review and comment. We don't expect there to be any, the change in trips were minimal. The impacts to the signal were minimal with this, with this change, but it was all provided in the supplemental traffic memo, which we know that you all wanted to see.
Okay, is anyone in the audience wanna comment on that or online? All right, I hear none. I wanna go back to...
This is Tom Healy from Nerea.
Jim? Sorry, go ahead, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the the fuel, the.
Your name, sir? Just your name?
Tom, Tom Healy representing Noria Energy.
Okay, so.
And I just wanted to explain again, the the reasoning for the additional fuel dispenser. The the spacing on this canopy that we're proposing is typical of how we lay out our fuel canopies. And we operate about one hundred thirty service stations throughout New England. And this is our standard template design for the space in between the fuel islands. The reason we like to put the sixth fuel dispensing island in there is so that at peak times, if we have, it's just easier for customers coming in to find an open fueling position. I don't expect that all those positions are going to be used all day long, but if you have rush hour traffic where you've got peak, peak traffic coming in there, we'd like to be able to accommodate the customers more easily by having that, those additional two fueling positions with the with the one fuel island added.
Okay. So Jimmy, what do you think?
I don't have a big problem with it. I just looked at the. Could be a little bit. If somebody.
Veronica?
Um, I agree with Jim. I just wanted to hear an explanation in the fact that it's a common template, as Mr. Healy said, that's used and I would assume that because it's a template that's used frequently, it really doesn't have a lot of issues, so I'm I'm fine with it.
All right, Ken, do you have any input on that?
No, I don't.
Okay, very well. So this is a, I guess, a minor modification and needs a just simple majority. So can I have a motion from someone? General, Mr. Brandley and Mrs. Mr. Name and Mr.?
I have one question.
Mr. Healy, do you guys need to add anything?
Yeah, Walter Cruz?
Yes, Walter.
Um, I don't have an issue with the six pump, but I remember this meeting, what happens when the fuel is delivered? That was the issue, I think, with that tightness. Um, I'm fine if the fire department signs off on the sweat plan, then, um, you know, that's, they're saying it's fine. But with the six pump and a fuel delivery, is that going to be an issue? And where are they going to offload the fuel?
Uh, it says, Mr. Healy, do you want to answer this or Mr. Bernardino?
Um, I could take that, Tom. The uh, the fuel delivery is going to operate the same basically as what was previously approved. What we're doing is we're changing the horizontal spacing of the pumps to add that sixth dispenser. Uh, vertically, you know, from the building to the street, the width of that has not changed significantly. We made some minor modification, minor modifications and actually some enhancements. So, um, as Heather mentioned before, uh, we have access aisles in excess of twenty-four feet. Uh, the access aisle between the the fuel dispensers and the parking spaces in front of the building is over thirty-two feet. And the aisle between the fuel dispensers and the delivery, the underground storage tanks is forty feet. So we have adequate room there to stage our delivery vehicles for fueling of the USTs, underground storage tanks, and have access to the pumps. Yes, there's adequate room for customers to gain access during the time.
Yeah, Mr. Jim, can you show the plan where the fuel? Or unload fuel, please?
Certainly. Be with me, there we go.
Yep.
So what we're going to do is fuel delivery vehicle will be coming in off of Cranberry Highway.
Yep.
And will be coming and circulating around the pumps. As I mentioned, we have almost thirty-three feet in this area here, which twenty-four feet is a standard for traffic. Um, and it'll go around the pumps where we have approximately forty feet from the edge of the pavement to the dispensing island. So that'll have enough room for our delivery vehicle truck to park right here. It still have access for vehicles coming in and out in different directions.
After the, after the tractor trailer part, how much you have from the edge tractor trailer to that dispensers? How much space?
Uh, generally, we're going to be about eight, ten feet from the tank and we need about ten feet um, from the edge of the fueling truck to the curb. So we're going to have approximately twenty to twenty-two feet from the edge of the truck to the canopy line. So we'll have about twenty feet during that one, you know, period during the day for that short unloading timeline.
Okay, and you don't think you'll have a problem if a car backs up?
Um, well, the the way these islands is set, there's no need for any vehicle to back up. These are all what we call dive islands where they are, you know, they'll, they'll pull in and pull straight out. They have.
Oh, okay.
So there's no queue waiting. They're all set at the pumps. So once they pull in, there's nobody in front of them to block their exiting movements.
Okay. All right, Walter, did you hear that?
Yes, I did, Walter Cruz. Um, yeah, I'm fine with that. If he's got, he's saying he's got, even with the truck, he's got over twenty-four, at least twenty-four, somewhere close. I'd be, I'm fine with that. And they said they have the fire department sign off.
That's correct. We we have had the fire department sign off. Um, you know, even prior to the very first meeting that we had, we knew that was one of the primary concerns during the initial meeting, so we made sure that we did reach out to the fire department.
Okay, and I believe Heather said you guys still waiting for the DOT like a permit? You haven't gotten it yet?
That that's correct. It's currently under review and from a timeline, Heather might be able to interject and give a broad range. DOT is a little, um, slow with the nineteen, but as is everybody, so.
We are at our second submission already, so we're waiting on comments on our seventy-five slash one and one hundred percent submission. So as soon as we get those comments, we'll turn them around and I think they'll have like another month or so to get us back final comments and or a permit. We we have two permits on this project, one for access to the site and one for access to do the off-site improvements.
Okay, very well. Anyone else would like to add anything? All right, I hear none. So so we have that minor modification on the case thirteen dash nineteen twenty-four dash sixteen Cranberry, I mean, twenty-four sixteen Cranberry Highway. Do I have a motion?
Move to it as presented.
Jim Akabachi, do I have a second?
Jacob Morrison, I'll second that.
Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye by Jim Akabachi.
Jake?
Aye, Jacob Morrison.
Aye, Veronica Devenice.
And myself, Nazir Al Kallasi, aye.
Walter Cruz, aye.
Okay, five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to public hearings.
Thanks.
Six, thank you very, thanks, Heather. Six dash twenty Higgins thirty-eight Windship Ave., special permit slash variance. Okay, who who's representing that?
Hi there, it's Gillian Morton with Morton Law. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. Um, so I trust you all have the petition, so I don't want to necessarily go through um, everything, but there are a lot of instances where variance isn't.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Ken, do we have to read the notice for the, like we did on public hearings? Don't we have to read the?
Yeah, why don't I read it out?
Yeah, why don't you do?
Okay.
Notice of online public hearing, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, starting at six P M, online meeting. Add a website link for Zoom. Postponed public hearings originally scheduled by the zoning board of appeals for April eighth, twenty twenty will now be heard on online public hearing as scheduled above in accordance with the COVID nineteen protocols. The meeting will include hearings on the following petitions. Petition number six dash twenty for variance from the requirements of Article six twenty-five, Note Two of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Donald P. Higgins, fifty-eight Werthen Drive, Groton, Mass, proposing to add a twenty-eight by forty-two detached garage at thirty-eight Windship Avenue, Wareham, Massachusetts, map twenty-two, one thousand three in the R sixty zoning district.
Okay, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, so as you heard, we're petitioning for the variance and and simply we've met all four of the statutory requirements. Um, there's a lot of instances where variance isn't acceptable, but this case is unique. Uh, Mr. Higgins, born and raised in Wareham, um, has owned this property. He's a builder as well. Um, and this property sits right on the water, so it is oceanfront and it has a unique, a unique shape and topography to the lot. Um, so there's no way really a garage, it's almost an impossibility, a garage could be in front of the bill, um, the main home. Um, so we're asking for the garage to be able to be built separately. Um, I want to draw your attention. I hope Sonia was able to bring those out, the exhibit. If you look at Exhibit D on the petition, that's the actual map that shows the lots. And we have letters from the two of butters. Sorry, I don't know if, um, Ken, if you got those from from Sonia. Um, but both of the butters directly next to Mr. Higgins' property actually are in favor of where the, um, where the garage is going. And, um, actually, one of, um, Mr. Dormizer has his garage right in front as well. So he already, these homes, it's it's typical of the neighborhood because of the oceanfront that the garages are are set up in front of the property. Um, the garage is also going to be tucked away. Um, there is tree line as well. Um, so it's really picked a good spot for it there. So, um, we're asking the petition be allowed for the variance because of the unique shape of the property. Um, so welcome any questions that you guys have regarding that.
Okay, very well. In this particular case, me and our clerk, Jim, we had the chance to go take a ride there and check it out. And I have to say, this is the perfect example for a hardship for a property. Of course, it's not about the person, it's about the property. And for the rest, for Jake, Veronica and Walter, if you haven't seen it, what it is, it's oceanfront. And our bylaws says if you add the garage or the shed, it has to be past building on the back and apparently the back is the water. So based on the topography and the uniqueness of the law and the neighborhood, it does fit, it meets the criteria and the statute of a hardship. So whoever have a question, we're gonna start by Jim.
I have no questions. I've seen the file, I've seen the plan, I've been to the site. Frankly, if it's a waterfront property, then the waterside is the front and this garage is in the back. I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the variance as requested, but I would like to let everybody else speak first. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake? Veronica?
I have no questions, no problem with the variance.
Walter?
Um, so what I understand is that there's no access to the rear because of the ocean view. So he just wants the garage tucked underneath the house, so it's from the front. Um, if that's the case, I don't see any problem with the.
Why, he's not putting, I, I, I believe you said the garage underneath. No, it's the garage in the front.
In the front, yeah.
Right, so because if he puts it in the back, it'll be in the water, basically. Okay, very well. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or against? I hear none. Ken, do you have any comments?
No, just that we received two letters in support of the application.
Okay, very well. Okay, we we're not, the support ones for throughout the hearings, with the support, we're not gonna read. The opposed will read for the record. If they're in favor, that's good. All right, so that being said, I'm, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jim Akabachi to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Jacob Morrison, I'll second that.
Okay, so what's delicious? Okay, I have a motion to grant the variance by Mr. Akabachi.
I'll second the motion, Veronica Devenice.
Yeah, I have a second by Veronica. All in favor? Start saying your name and aye or nay.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Jim Akabachi, aye.
Veronica Devenice, aye.
Myself, Nazir Al Kallasi, aye.
Walter Cruz, aye.
Aye, five zero zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, second public hearing, seven dash twenty King, Twelve Little Harbor Road, but it's a variance. Uh, Ken, would you mind reading it? For the record? Kenny, unmute. Kenny?
Ken, you muted.
Kenny, you muted.
I'm unmuted now. Postponed public hearings originally scheduled by the zoning board of appeals for April eighth, twenty twenty will now be heard at an online public hearing as scheduled above in accordance with its COVID nineteen protocols. The meeting will include hearings on the following petitions. In this case, petition number seven dash twenty for a variance from the requirements of Table three thirty under the Wareham zoning bylaws for Tara King, care of J C Engineering, Inc. of two eighty fifty-four Cranberry Highway East Wareham, Mass, proposing to construct an existing garage with an in-law apartment above at Twelve Little Harbor Road, Wareham, Mass, Assessors Map twenty-eight, lot twenty-eight in the R sixty zoning district.
Okay, who's, uh, who's speaking for J C?
Uh, Sam Iameli with J C Engineering.
You presenting the case, Sam?
Yes, correct.
Okay, because you're presenting the case, I'm not going to be able to sit on it because I've done business with you. So you'll have four members. You okay to go forward with four members?
Yes.
Okay, very well. It's yours to explain and just please, uh, let the board know what the zone area it is.
Yeah, so the project addresses Twelve Little Harbor Road. It's in the R sixty zoning district. Um, our client wishes to raise the existing garage and reconstruct a proposed garage within the footprint with a second story in-law apartment above. Um, a little background, our client's father owns the property for thirty-two years now um, and has many family in the, which reside in the area. Um, as he looks to retire, he wishes to give the property to his daughter while maintaining a living space of his own so that he was, is not intrusive to his daughter's life, but still able to live in the house in which his family grew up in. Um, the structure will comply with all other zoning regulations. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, for the records, Jim will chair this, uh, this hearing because I can't sit on it. Jimmy?
Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention. I read, I've, I've seen the file, I've looked at it, I've driven by the house. From what I can gather, they're simply going to take the existing garage, rip the roof off and put it up uh, living quarters up above it. Is that correct?
Uh, the existing garage will be completely demolished and a new garage will be protected because of inadequate.
So they're going to tear it down, but it's going to be the same.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, I'll pass questions to the board. I have no questions. I'm fine with it. Uh, Jake, do you have any questions?
Uh, this is Jacob Morrison. I have no questions or a problem with this project.
Walter, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't have a problem going forward, but I just want to ask one question is is it, is the utility is going to be coming from the main house or are you going to have all new plumbing and everything going into the garage? Is it going to be a separate dwelling or is it still going to be considered on off the one meter off the main house?
No, everything will be connected to the main house.
I'm fine.
Veronica?
So I have a question about restrictions upon a sale, if we were to approve something like this. You know, to prevent it from being rented in the future by, you know, someone that might buy the property at a later date, which would effectively make it a duplex or a two-family dwelling. Isn't, what are the restrictions on sale? Can we place any restrictions on the sale or?
I believe, I believe you can recommend a
I believe, I believe you can recommend a recorded
condition on the variance.
And that, that would run with the property.
Yes, you can put a condition on the variance that restricts it for the term of the, of the life of the, of the project.
I may recommend some. I know I'm not sitting on it, but if I may say something. With the restriction, I recommend that the board says that they cannot have their own separate electric nor gas meter. So that always binds up to be one, how to be one dwelling, much as possible. I don't need a restriction. That's my, my thinking, so I don't have a say on that.
I believe that was the basis of Walter's questions. I agree. Okay, so Ken has no comment. Anybody that's signed up in the public would like to make comment in favor? Hearing none. Is there anybody that's logged? Hearing none. I move forward and ask what would make a motion.
I would make a motion to approve, Jacob Morrison, as presented.
Thank you, Jacob. Anybody want a second?
I would not second it. I, I think there need to be restrictions and not accept it as presented.
Then would you like to modify the, the motion to include a restriction?
I would, I would approve the motion. I would second the emotion if there were restrictions for, on the deed for sale and to have utilities connected to the main dwelling.
Okay, Jake, you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Your motion is modified as such.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, wait for a second.
Second, Veronica Debonis.
I'll approve it with conditions that there is to be no utilities grabbed separate or, or any type of utilities make itself sufficient.
Okay. Is that Walter?
I know Walter just said that he would accept it with the utilities being connected. Walter, can you hear me?
Not with the utility being connected, that it would not be a self-sufficient unit. In other words, it would have its own electric and all of that. I would not approve it that way. I approve that it has to be attached to the house, all utilities, to the existing house.
I thought that's what we had stated, no?
Right, that's what, you're correct.
Okay.
So I will, myself. The motion to be made and seconded to approve the variance with the stipulation of the utility are not separate. And that there's a restriction on the deed, that this is not separate dwelling. And I'm looking for a vote from the board member.
And if I, if I may, Jim? Who's gonna, who's gonna draft the, the restrictions? Ken, our attorney, or theirs?
We can, we can write that up in the, in the approval. And I can write it by Rich Bowen, Town Council.
Right, if it has to be recorded, has to be drafted properly.
Yeah, I'll talk to Rich Bowen, Town Council, and get his wording on it.
Okay, very well.
Sorry, John. No problem. Still looking for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Veronica Debonis, aye.
Walter?
Walter Cruz, aye.
And myself, Jim Akabachi, aye.
Thank you. So we move forward to public hearing on the agenda C. Churchill, 2850 Cranberry Highway, special permit. All right, again, for the record, I've done business with Mr. Churchill. John, are you there? Sam, John, are you there?
Yes, I'll be representing this one as well.
All right, Sam, as well, I can sit on this matter. Would you, would you like to go forward with four boards, four members?
Yes, we would.
All right, very well. Jim, it's yours again.
Okay, go ahead, Sam. Tell us what you got going.
Anybody want to read it for the records first?
Petition number 820 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Table 623, and Article 3, Table 320, under the Wareham zoning bylaws for John Churchill Jr. of 2854 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Mass, proposing construction of a two-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot at 2850 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Mass, Assessors Map 129, Lot 1077, in the Commercial Strip zoning district.
Yes, so project address is 2850 Cranberry Highway. This is currently a vacant lot, which sits on a commercial zoning district. It fronts on Cranberry Highway, and we are proposing to construct a duplex on the property, which is allowed by special permit in this zoning district.
Okay, so if I understand it correctly, Sam, I did review this file before this evening. It is zoned for two-family, but the zoning would require 45,000 square feet, and you've got about 30,000. Is that about correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so you're shy, you're looking for a variance on the lot coverage?
Correct.
Also, in reviewing this file before this evening, I got somewhat confused because I saw something in the application about changing the front entrance, but it, is that, is that on this application, or is that something separate? Did they get mixed? What's going on with the language about the front entrance?
No, the front, excuse me, the front entrance would be how you see it on the site plan there, just a, a single entrance driveway for both housing units.
Okay, so the, what I read had to do with the curb cut, if you will, not the front door?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so the question for us is, are we okay with a two-family on a lot that's zoned for a two-family in a neighborhood that has a few multifamilies, but they're shy on the lot coverage? And I pass.
Okay, I have a question. I think the comment was made that it's currently non-conforming, but it's vacant, so for the use, how could it be currently non-conforming?
I'm sorry, Veronica, can you repeat that?
Yeah, there was a statement that it's a currently non-conforming lot. But if it's vacant, how can it be currently non-conforming?
I don't think the comment was that it was non-conforming. I think the comment was that it was unoccupied, vacant. Let's ask Sam. Is it non-conforming?
It is a vacant lot.
Veronica, I don't know what it is that you're referencing.
I want to say, I heard Ken say that, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, it's on this article in the town.
Go ahead, Walter. Tell us what it is that it says.
Sam, Walter Cruz. This is a letter from the Building Department. I have reviewed your proposals to create a new six-bedroom new pack at 2580 Cranberry Highway due to the lot area frontage required. Required, and I must deny your application at this time. Your proposal is to construct a new front entry addition on your existing residential dwelling is being denied under the following section of the Wareham bylaws. The proposed duplex does not meet the minimum lot area that is required, and that's what he's looking for the variance for.
So the letter is referencing an existing single-family dwelling.
Right.
It is an existing family, single-family dwelling. Maybe, maybe when the letter was proposed, there was an error in what was written. What we have is, the non-conformity would be the lot coverage. You need 45,000 square feet for a two-family, they got 30.
So.
But they don't have the lot size.
So can we clarify? This says that they're in front of us for a special permit, but that sounds like it would be a variance, would it not?
Absolutely. I agree with you, Veronica. It is a variance. So do we have a problem? Do we have a problem with the way this was publicly announced?
I would think so. If it doesn't reference a variance, then you wanted to provide a variance to allow the project to proceed.
So then the proper action for us to take right now is to table this and let it be re-advertized properly, and we can take a vote on it when it's properly advertised.
Correct.
Does the rest of the board agree?
Walter Cruz, I agree.
Veronica Debonis, I agree.
Jacob Morrison, I agree as well.
Put this on the table and ask you to come back, but in the meantime, this has to be re-advertized with the, with the proper request. You're looking for a variance, not a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
If, if I may.
Go ahead, Nazir.
Anything you have to re-advertise and reapply, they have to withdraw this application. That's, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken.
I didn't quite catch that.
Nazir's. Withdraw this one completely and re-advertizes a whole new application.
That'd be a safer way to do it.
Sam, do you understand?
I do, yes. We will apply for a variance.
So we're not gonna deny you. We're just gonna have you withdraw without prejudice, and you apply for a brand-new variance. We'll get it in front of the board as quick as we can, and we'll act accordingly.
Just to be clear, it's both a special permit for the use and a variance for the lot size.
Will you work with Sam and make sure he gets his application in properly?
We'll do that.
Thank you. So Sam, you're gonna do a withdrawal. We'll have some paperwork probably emailed to you out of Ken's office, and that'll all happen, and we'll put a new application in. We're done with you. Good night.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we move to 9-20, Mr. Ellis, 9 Old Glen Charlie Road, special permit slash variance. Aye, Kenny?
Mute it again. Ken, you muted.
Petition number 9-20 for a buildable lot determination under the requirements of MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, for William Ellis of P.O. Box 491, Onset, Mass, proposing to construct a single-family house, which will be attached to an existing garage at 9 Old Glen Charlie Road, Wareham, Mass, Assessors Map 129, Lot 1097, in the Strip Commercial zoning district.
All right, Mr. Ellis, wanna tell us what you're trying to do?
Mr. Ellis is Bob Rogers, Mr. Chairman from GAF Engineering. If you need Mr. Ellis to initiate the presentation, that's fine, then I can pick it up from there.
Yes, please.
Yes, I'm trying to, I'm currently on the garage, the property in the garage here. I'm trying to add a house onto it as my main residence.
Okay, Bob, is that, so it's a commercial, strip commercial right now?
So yes, Mr. Chairman, so it's, it's in the commercial strip zone. The garage was constructed in 2008. So this lot is deficient on frontage and area. A single-family residence is allowed in the commercial strip zone. So by granting the variance due to the lack, due to the under, or, excuse me, due to the deficient, and frontage is only deficient by 20 feet, area is only deficient by about 10,000 square feet. But, so by granting the variance to allow the construction of the attached single-family dwelling, then the board would be bringing this property into conformance in terms of the use. So right now, you have an accessory use in the form of the garage, and we're trying to add the principal use, which would be the single-family dwelling.
So you wanna have a garage as a business and a house?
No, the garage is there presently. It's not a business. We want to complete the project with the addition of a single-family home, so it would just be a single-family home attached to the existing garage.
And when was the garage built, you said?
It was in 2008.
And what was that? Was it grandfather lot?
It was a, there was a garage on the property. You have the letter from, from Mr. Morris that goes through the history of the property.
So I'm assuming the garage was there for a very long time, and he rebuilt it or something?
Yeah, the garage, well, you can speak to the condition of the original garage, but.
The original garage was there. It was dilapidated, it was falling down, and it was basically, if you went up Old Glen Charlie Road, it was on the property line, right by the town road. I acquired the property. I tore that down and replaced it, but when I replaced it, I set it off in the back left corner, if you were facing it, with the intentions of, down the road, I was going to attach a house to it. And that was like four building commissioners ago or so, and, you know, he said it shouldn't be a problem, but obviously, you know, things have changed, different building commissioners. And now I've, and before I had to live in Onset because of my job. Now I don't have to because I'm kind of semi-retired. I just want to build a house there, and it's not a commercial garage. I just use it to store my stuff at the moment.
So right now, basically, we have a garage, just, just a garage sitting right on the lot by itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Most people build a house, then add a garage. I just built the garage and want to add a house.
Well, I, I'm surprised they gave you a permit back then. You can't just build an accessory without a house, main residence, but I guess it is there, it's there.
Yeah, but it's strip commercial, that's why.
Oh, so it was built as, as a business?
No, it was built as just a storage garage for myself.
Ah, I see.
And they allowed it because I told them I was down the road, I want to attach a house, and they went, shouldn't be a problem, you just gotta get it set back off the road, because it was on the road.
Okay, Jimmy?
So I have, I like to get things in my mind. If I went up the old Glen Charlie Road before it got cut off and was the way up Glen Charlie, if I go up that, it's on the right-hand side, there's a white house, it's now a three-family, and then there was a garage that was kind of at, at an angle that faced the street. Is that the one that was torn down?
That's the one. It was Squirrel's Nest Garage.
Yep, okay.
And it was, like you said, remember it being right on the corner of the street just about?
I remember it vividly. I have a picture of it in my mind, how the door faced. I, I remember it vividly. It's gone now, and now you just want to put it. So my only comment to you and to the rest of the board is, we just, we just talked to one of your neighbors. You can, from your yard, you can see the other yard where the guy wants to put the two-family.
Yes, sir.
He's 15,000 square feet short. We don't seem to be having a problem with that.
that, you're ten thousand square feet short, I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay.
The rest of the board.
I appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Um, I, I don't have a problem with the project as well.
Veronica.
So would this be an existing non-conforming?
Um, it's, it's, it's like, it's weird, I mean, it has a garage, I mean, I'm not a fan of, by the, for the record, I'm Nazir Al Qalasi, I'm not a fan of creating buildable lots, or if it's unbuildable, make it buildable, however, I guess in this case, there's a garage on it, I mean, e- either you could have a garage, you could have a mechanic tomorrow running a show there, as a, as a repair shop, or, or a business, or you could have a house, so it's something for the board to pick. Veronica, you get that?
I do, it seems like, because there is a garage there, that this is an existing non-conforming, despite it's, and it's unusual, like you said about having the garage, but it is existing, so, I don't even, I don't know, but is this even a variance?
It does for a dwelling, for a house.
Okay.
Walter?
Um, Walter Cruz, um, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, it looks like he has all this set back and everything, um, you know, um, I don't have a problem, I really keep it as strong.
Okay, do you have any input on that? Kenny, do you have any on that?
Um, no.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience want to speak in favor, or oppose against this project? In, anything else?
Can I ask one question?
Sure, we're not close, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Ellis, so when this, this was built in two thousand and eight? The garage was there? Or prior to that?
The garage, the garage, the garage I tore down was built nineteen hundred.
Okay.
It, it was a hundred years old when I tore it down, um, when I tore it down and built a new one, I believe it was two thousand and eight, I, am I correct, Bob?
Yes, that's correct, per David Morris's letter, yeah.
So it did exist in non-conforming, Veronica, for the garage.
Okay, yeah, that's what it sounded like, I just wanted to have some clarification of what the zoning was in two thousand and eight, if that was when the garage first went up, but if it was there for.
Yes, no, that garage. From like nineteen hundred, right.
It's not non-conforming, it's conforming, because you can put up a garage, and on strip.
But it's undersized lot, so it is existing non-conforming, it's undersized lot. All right, so, uh, so bottom line, he still needs a variance for a dwelling, because he's changing the use, so we're gonna, so we're gonna, uh, before we go forward with any wishes, if anyone else want to add anything up? I hear none, so can I have a motion to close public hearing nine dash twenty?
So moved, by Jim Akabachi.
Do I have a second?
Second that, Jacob Morrison.
All in favor to close, say aye.
Aye, Jim Akabachi.
Aye, Jacob Morrison.
Aye, Veronica Devenice.
Aye, Nazir Al Qalasi.
Aye, Walter Cruz.
Okay, public hearing is closed, the, the board want to make a motion if, if they wish to grant a variance to change the use, to build the single dwelling and abandon the commercial garage, use that, let, let me rephrase, we, he wants to build the house and use the garage as a garage for the house, not a business. You understand, Mr. Ellis, so you cannot run a business out of the garage, just given you, if the board wishes to give you a house, that the garage would be for the house?
Yeah, no, I, I, Sam, I'm retired, I plan on running no business.
Okay, and you attaching the house to the garage, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, all right, so what's the wishes of the board?
Nazir, can you clarify? If, if this is strip commercial?
Right.
Regardless, if we permit, uh, residents at some future time, what would be the process of somebody using that commercially if they so desired?
They need to change the use again.
By special permit or variance?
I believe, uh.
Change your use.
Uh, change your use by variance, because it's a non-conforming lot, but, I don't know, Ken, do you have any input on that?
Um, it's a, uh, non-conforming lot, and, uh, the, uh, the variance would have to be, uh, modified to, uh, change the use.
Okay, you get that, Veronica, so if we grant a variance for a residential, he's going to have to come back for the different variants to do as a commercial? Get that?
Um, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, but if it's zoned, strip commercial, I don't think we can change it to a residential zoning, right?
Why, that's what we're here for. We're not changing the zoning, we're changing the use, that's why he's here for a variance.
Okay.
Okay, we changing the, the use and the size, because he don't have the, the footage and the frontage, I believe, as well. Is that right, Ken?
Uh, well, the, the building commissioner actually, um, said that these lots were merged for zoning purposes.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, it just, so a single-family residence isn't allowed use in the commercial strip zone. The only thing, the only thing that we're deficient on is twenty feet of frontage and ten thousand square feet of area.
Okay, so we're not given a variance of the use, we're given a variance of the size.
And the frontage, correct.
Okay.
So dimensional requirements for commercial strip.
Do you guys get that, and in, in a normal day, like I said, I'm not a fan of granting, making a lot buildable, but in this case, we have a garage or a business, I'm okay personally to put a house versus a garage in that area anyway, because most of the neighbors are houses. So that's the clarification, anyone else wants clarification? Veronica, you need any more clarification?
No, I think that made more sense to me, what was just stated about, um, the commercial zone, uh, strip. Um, so it would be giving a variance for the size of the lot, not necessarily the use, right?
If it was a general commercial, you need a variance, because residential is allowed in general commerce, strip commercial is allowed.
Just to clarify, you're, you're giving a variance so that he can build a, a single-family dwelling on the site?
Correct. Correct.
I hope that doesn't muddy it more.
No, it doesn't, I'm just trying to, I, I don't understand why he needs a variance when it's a special permit, if it's in a commercial strip, is it not?
No.
Oh, okay.
He needs a variance for the size of the lot, he's, he's applying for a special permit slash variance to cover himself, because sometimes, like, just what happened before you guys before, Mr. Churchill came in with a special permit, which he really needs a var, he advertised special permit slash variance, it would have been hurt tonight, but unfortunately, it wasn't the case, so, Mr. Ellis applied for a special or variance, whichever way the board sees it, and the board see as a variance.
Right, because it's existing non-conforming, anyway.
No, the variance, no, variance because don't have footage and frontage. Lot size and frontage, that's what he's, he's allowed, he's allowed to put a residential there, he doesn't need a variance for it, but he don't have the frontage and footage.
I know, but I guess the confusion comes in that he already has a garage on the property, which makes it existing non-conforming.
Commercial, not residential.
Right, but.
The, the garage is conforming, but it's an existing non-conforming lot. For a garage. You understand?
So the frontage to have a garage there is, is.
It's because it's existing, yes, no, if it, if it was an empty lot, it would need hundred fifty feet of frontage, thirty thousand square feet, but that garage existed forever.
Correct, so it's existing non-conforming, is my point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
For a garage.
Okay.
Not for a house.
Okay.
That's why we need to grant this gentleman a variance, if the board wishes, so he doesn't have an issue, if it was appealed or something.
Okay.
Not that an advance will fly in court, but that's, that's, that's not a problem after that, all right, so now, again, who's, what?
I have another question.
Yes.
So, and, and my question has no impact on my opinion on this, I, I have an opinion of, a favorable opinion, but my question is to the engineer, and if we're non-conforming, and thirty thousand is what's required, and we're ten thousand short, so we got a twenty thousand square foot lot, morally?
Yeah, there's two parcels, uh, that comprise, that add up to twenty thousand, the one on the plan, that's one of the lots, um, so, yep.
All right, so, is it a two-bedroom house?
No, this would be a, a single-family house, um, how many bedrooms, Billy?
Three to four, maximum.
So here's my, here's my question to the engineer, and, and maybe it's just, i- it's just as much curiosity as anything else, I was in the impression that you need ten thousand square feet of land per bedroom to build a septic system, is this going on town sewage?
No, it's not, we have a perk test scheduled, uh, for the property, so we're going to do a perk test, and it will be a subsurface sewage disposal system.
But doesn't the lot area restrict you to two bedrooms?
That's not our one thirty, only on Zone Two, that's not, that's not a Zone Two.
Yeah, I, we haven't gotten that far, to be honest, uh, we know with it, we don't have an issue with, uh, separation to wetlands, um, I don't specifically know if it's near or, or within a, a special zone.
Is that on Zone Two?
I don't, I don't know, one, one way or the other, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I guess the border house will have to deal with this, if it's Zone Two, Mr. Akabachi is right, but not for us to say how many bedrooms.
Yeah, it's not, it's outside our jurisdiction, my question was simply, how are you going to put a four-bedroom house on a two-bedroom lot? Septic one?
Yeah, we, we, we would be restricted to, to what's allowed by the border house, certainly.
That could be two bedrooms.
Right, if the border health, I can only have a septic system for a two-bedroom, that's all that's going to go there, if I can have it for three to four, that's what's going to go there.
We, we let the border house decide. Let's move to, let's move to a, 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 a motion, be quick.
Motion will be discussed. I don't think we closed it.
Yes, we did, it passed five zero zero.
Okay.
I have the note.
Sorry.
That's all right, all right, so motion, what's the?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by, uh, to approve a var, grant a variance for nine Glen Charlie Road by Jim Akabachi, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Jacob Morrison.
Okay, the, okay, we have a second by Jake, all in favor to grant a variance, say their name, aye or no?
Jim Akabachi, aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Veronica Devenice, aye.
Nazir Al Qalasi, aye.
Walter Cruz, aye.
Okay, so it passes five zero zero, and, uh, Mr. Ellis, good luck, but, and like I said, you have to take it up, Mr. Roger knows, uh, has to go to border house, how many bedrooms they allow you, it's totally up to them, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, have a good night.
You too.
You too.
All right, we move to public hearing, ten dash twenty, Cosgrove, forty-nine Blackmore Pond Circle, special permit slash variance.
Petition number ten twenty for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article thirteen, Section sixty-two, line two of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Barry Cosgrove of nine Smith Cliffs Road, Laguna Beach, California, proposing to improve and expand the pre-existing non-conforming structure at forty-nine Blackmore Pond Circle, Wareham Mass, Assessors Map seventy-six, Lot ten-ten and ten-eleven, and ten-twelve, in the R-sixty zoning district.
Okay, is Mr. Cosgrove here? Okay, Mr. Cosgrove is not here.
Rich Reom here, speaking his behalf.
What's your name, sir?
Richard Reom, I'm the engineer that stamped the plan.
Okay, Richard, you want to tell us what you're doing there? And, and tell us about the existing, what's there right now?
There is, there is a new house, um, it's an R-sixty zoning, uh, with the minimum area required of sixty thousand square feet, but the lot is currently eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-nine square feet, um, and the required setback in the R-sixty zone is sixty feet, and right now, the building itself, the dwelling, is forty foot of setback, and it has a deck in front of it that has a, a thirty-foot setback, and there's an existing shed, the front yard, that has a twenty-five-foot setback, um, and what we're proposing to do is to move the shed back, so it has a forty-foot setback, uh, to remove the deck in front of the existing dwelling, um, so that the dwelling itself is the nearest to the road, so that would be a forty-foot setback, uh, and then we're proposing to add a garage on the, uh, right side of the building, that's the north side, and, uh, a building addition on the south side, that would be in the left side, if you're facing it from the street, um, and so, the, the two additions would be set back the same amount as the current building is set back, so it requires a, a special permit for extending a, a non-conforming use being no, no more harsh than the current, um, non-conductance.
Is there a plan, Richard, you could put us online, so we could look at it, is anybody has a plan, I didn't see, showing the existing and what's proposed?
Yeah, I seem, seem to have lost my ability to share my screen, um.
Oh, she has, she has it here, so I looked over here. Can you make it there, what's the existing?
This, well, it says right here, this is the proposed petition.
Yeah.
This is the proposed garage.
Okay. Farm's.
Remain.
And there's a, there's a road?
No, it's a lot, the, the road's over here, I think.
Okay, is, the porch is gonna, is facing the road, right, Richard?
Right, right now, yeah, there's a, a deck, it, it doesn't have a roof on it, but it has, it's elevated above the ground level, so it's a, it's a deck, so it says existing deck to be removed, so we're just going to take that deck that's thirty feet from the road away, so the, the, the nearest structure to the road will now be the main dwelling itself, which is forty.
This is the dwelling, here's, here's the deck.
Okay. Jimmy, do you see that?
No, but I did look at it before I came.
Good job. Yeah, all right, all right, guess, so, so what we're facing here is an existing non-conforming law, and they're increasing the non-conformity, now, the, the, the question to be asked here, if the, if the board believes it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, will move forward with a special permit to increase the non-conformity, if the board believe it's that more detrimental to the neighbor, or it is detrimental to the neighborhood, we're going to have to move, before we go forward, is there anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or against?
Yeah, uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Attorney Jillian Morton here again, with Morton Law, I represent one of the abutters, Mr. and Mrs. Trembley.
Yeah.
So we'd like to speak against.
Okay, and what's, what's the reason you're speaking against, what's the, what's more detriment?
Um, well, first of all, we definitely think it would be a variance and not a special permit, um, and I did submit in opposition, um, and if, if the board members have that, they can take a look at the specific pictures that I've included of the road, um, the flooding that, um, this is a dirt road on Blackmore Pond, I don't know if any of the board members have had a chance to take a, a drive down there or look at the property, um, uh, Richard also mentioned the, that there's going to be an addition on, um, one side and then the other, um, but the plans that I received too are saying that they want to demolish the existing structure, um, so for me, a- and my client, it's really building up this, um, small cottage, um, that's the nature of the neighborhood. Um, so for me and my client, it's really building up this, um, small cottage, um, that's the nature of the neighborhood, to a large, um, house that's, um, not consistent with the nature of the neighborhood. Um, so, and I do have the plan. I can share my screen if that's helpful for the board.
Okay, Richard, do, do you get what the attorney's saying? We usually, I mean, if you wish to go for a variance, you really have to prove a hardship to grant your variance, but to speak, uh, to be honest with you, you're probably better off not to be not detrimental. This is our main, uh, like clue, uh, clause to grant, to go as a special permit, and usually when we don't, when we grant special permits versus a variance in cases like this, we usually take five houses average, and you should be pretty much the same as the five houses uh, next to you, left or right. So personally, I didn't go there. I don't know if some, any of the board member went there, but if it is, if it does not look like the houses next door, it becomes a variance. If you wish to go forward with the variance, I mean, we, we have no problem. Uh, but like I said, it's, it's, it's a lot harder to provide a variance when you, when you, when you're more detrimental to the neighbor, and when, when it doesn't, like, when it faces, when it changes the face of the neighborhood, it becomes, uh, becomes very hard to, to grant. So I, I, I'm gonna speak for myself, of course not for the board. I personally would like, I didn't go by there. I, I know the area very well, but I can't picture it, which one it is. Uh, I would like to table this matter personally, to go drive by there, and we, each one of us hopefully will print a plan and drive by there and see how bad it, it looks to the neighborhood, how, 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 how much, how unique it is, or, or how detrimental or not detrimental. The attorney saying, I guess, it's detrimental, we were just gonna take her word for it. So I personally would like to take a ride there with the plan in my hand. I wanna pass to my followers right here to my friend. See what they say. Jimmy?
I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to drive by.
Okay, Jake?
I agree with that.
Uh, Veronica?
I'm sorry, did the attorney mention that she had some documents that she was able to screen share with us?
Um, I do have the plan. If you'd like to see the plan, I also have pictures that I, I'm not sure if Sonia sent you with my opposition. So it actually shows my client's property and, um, and actually looking at the property that they're talking about building out. It's gonna take away completely his view of the pond. Um, my client's been there for twenty-six years, so, um, and he's actually on, um, the call with us tonight, so he's happy to meet with any of the board members to, to, um, to see the property as well.
I'd like to see the pictures or what you have, if everybody else is aware of that.
Yeah, we do not have copies of the pictures.
Yeah.
You do not? Okay. So let me pull that up.
I'm the owner, I'm the applicant. Would I be welcome to speak, please?
Yes, yes, just give us one second, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and I can submit this again, um, to, to the board or, or to Mr. Buckland to submit to the, the rest of the board, um, the actual opposition that I sent. So let me share my screen. Um, okay. Okay, can you guys see photo one? This is photo one.
That's the, that's the subject?
Absolutely, yep. So this is taken from my client's property. Um, and you can see that the, they wanna demolish this whole structure, as well as then add on a garage here and then an addition there. Um, frankly, that would completely take away all his view. Um, again, he's been there for twenty-six years, grown up there. Um, so, and then photo two, I wanted to take notice to, obviously, um, the fact, you know, how it would affect the road. So construction, this is a dirt road when you drive on it. Um, I've been a Wareham resident all my life, and I've never been down there, but I drove down there and it is a dirt road with, um, flooding issues, frequent flooding issues, and, and almost singular, like if there were two cars, you could not drive next to each other. Um, and then I believe the last, the last one is just a, a deed, my, my, um, client's deed references of, um, a right of way to the road and, and access and things like that. So just bringing to the, um, board's attention the issue surrounding if this basically new, almost triple in size home gets built. Um, you can see this is another cottage next to it. Um, so, yeah, absolutely. I welcome everyone to take a drive down there.
I don't think, uh, as a road access, uh, somebody's taking, it's gonna take away your client road access, and the flooding, I don't think is the applicant issue. However, we do take in consideration the view as well as the size. Our most concern is not, like I said, not to be detrimental to the neighborhood, so.
Yes.
Personally, I'd like to take a ride there. If all the house, like seven hundred square feet, I definitely don't wanna for, run
Yeah.
two thousand square feet.
If, if I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So the, um, the property owner in question, Mr. Cosgrove, also owns several other parcels on this area, in this area. Um, so our fear would be that it would set precedent to change this community, which is really, you can see cottages, um, to then build out all these. It would change the neigh, the neighborhood, and that's obviously in the, in the statute and in, in the bylaws of trying to keep the integrity. Um, and, yeah, absolutely.
That's not what's before us. If he owns the whole neighborhood, that's not what's before us. Anyway. All right, Counselor, so, uh, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Grass?
Cosgrove.
Cosgrove, would, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, thank you very much. First of all, for the water issue, that's called a puddle. There's no flooding issue for anyone. It's a small.
That's not your, that's not, anyway, I just discussed, it's not your problem. It doesn't impact your project.
Only make the point to, to, that it's fiction. Secondly, if you're gonna come and look at the area and you've come down through the Blackmore Pond Circle, Holly Tree Lane area, what you'll find is that my existing home is, is a fraction of the size of all the newly built and newly remodeled and expanded homes that come all the way down there, and even with this addition, this house will be smaller than the house right next door, maybe even the two immediately across the street, including the, including the individual complaining. Uh, the entire area, we are sort of trying to upgrade to what the entire area has become. So there's this notion that it's going to change detrimentally is, is just utter fiction, and a quick drive-by would, would, would verify that in a, in a moment's time. As for the view, the, the, the complainant here has a two-story house that looks, that's setback so far, they look right over where we will be. So we're, so the, 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 the notion that the view would be diminished is just, again, utter fiction.
All right, we, we'll take your comment in consideration. Like I said, I, we would like to take drive there, and like I said, if, if we take an average five around your neighborhood and we don't see a problem, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I would like to take a ride. Regarding the view, I would like to check the bylaws personally. If we have any, I don't think in our bylaws, Counselor, we have
Doesn't exist.
That, I don't know, Counselor, do, do we have anything in our bylaws that says we cannot obstruct the view?
Yeah, so that would be something that I would definitely go back to the bylaws for, as far as it being fiction about, um, the, the view. I did, obviously disagree with that. He can't, he won't be able to see any of the water if the house is expanded outward.
Well, section under bylaw, I, I, I can't.
Um, I was, well, I was referencing, I, I used the, they were, um, they used um, thirteen fifty-two is where, I guess, what they were trying to hold the horse to, um, and, and we're arguing it is substantially more detrimental. Um, and I would ask too, that again, that question of whether a special permit versus a variance, did we make it, was there a, a decision on that they would have to be going for a variance and a hardship?
We, that's why we, personally, and will, I, I believe the whole board did show interest to go look at it, and that's what makes us decide if it's a special permit or a variance. If we, if it's detrimental, we're gonna treat it as a variance. If we don't believe it's detrimental, we'll treat it as a special permit. So I guess, if the board, if all the board in agreement, we'll table this to the next hearing, which is, uh, what is it?
Before we move, I'd like to ask one more question.
Yes. All right, Jimmy, what's your question?
Uh, to the attorney representing the, uh, party objecting. Do you know if your client has a view easement over this property, a deed to?
Um, not of record. I actually have, um, as part of the opposition, the, um, the deed attached. There is not a, of record, um, view easement.
Thank you.
There is a right of way to the road, but.
Okay. Any, anyone, uh, so are we all on board? Would like to take a ride and, uh, uh, postpone it till the next meeting on your agenda?
Yes, I have, um, one other request.
Yeah, what is it?
Um, I agree, I'd like to take a ride and look at the lots, but I would also like to see um, a schematic of all the lots and the existing dwellings, because just looking at the lot doesn't gonna, the buildings isn't gonna tell me the lot sizes per dwelling. So I'd like to see how that is configured on paper with lots and dwellings.
I can show you an aerial photo.
Fair for the applicant. Wait, excuse me, Ken?
I can show, I can produce an aerial photo with lot lines on it from the assessor's information.
Okay, I think that that would, that would suffice instead. I, I mean, I don't think it's fair to the applicant to have him survey the whole neighborhood. But that, that, what Ken suggested is a very good idea. Okay, can also point out. Wanna add anything?
I just wanna point out that the Conservation Commission looked at this exciting program and, and approved it unanimously.
Yeah, they have no impact on our decision anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Sharing this for us. All right, uh, so Walter, do you have any question?
Um, no, I, uh, I agree with everyone else. I'd like to take, um, a ride out there, look at the, at the neighborhood. Um, you know, I'd like to see the house that he proposes and the neighborhood across the street, and look at the house, so I can see, uh, you know, what, what's in the area, so I'd like to see what the house is.
Okay, very well. Richard, are you okay with continuing this till June ten, or you need more time?
So, June tenth would be plenty of time. That's, that's.
Very well. Is everybody okay with June ten? If so, can somebody make a motion to continue, continue till June ten?
I make a motion to continue the hearing till June tenth.
Can you say your name, Veronica?
Veronica Devenice.
Okay, I have a more, continue public hearing ten dash twenty till June ten, two thousand twenty by Veronica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jacob Morrison, all in favor, say aye and say their name.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Veronica Devenice, aye.
Nazir Al Qalasi, aye.
Walter Cruz, aye.
Very well. Uh, we will take a ride there and we'll see you next time. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, very well. Uh, continue public hearing, uh, forty-nine dash nineteen, three oh seven Cranberry Highway LLC.
Mr. Chairman, the proponent has asked for a continuance to, to, uh, June tenth.
Just for the record, which project is this?
Ken, which project is that? Is that one of those? No.
No, no, three oh six seven. I can look it up. Three oh six seven, three oh six seven. Who's the owner, Kenny? Who's the applicant?
Uh, this is, uh, Len Bello is representing the, um, his office is representing the applicant.
And you don't know who's the applicant, huh?
No, I don't have that file with me.
I know. Can somebody look at online?
Looking it up right now.
He's looking it up right now, one second.
So which one is this? It's six, what number is that?
Three oh six seven. Three zero six.
Oh, I don't have it on there. They didn't send it to us.
One second, Ken.
On the agenda.
No, no, it's, the people asked to continue, but we just wanna know what project it is, one second. I know, but we'd just like to know which one it is. Okay, next to show one. Oh, oh, okay, I see. I think this is the dealership, uh, the Jesus.
Oh, yes, yes, it is.
Okay, very well. So that's, that used to be protein. It's next to Charlie Speeds, if everybody knows which one, that dealership. And the gentleman wants to increase, uh, the, all, the, the license for the cars, but the highway taken. So you guys know what it is, so we have no problem. Ken, did, when did I wanna continue it till?
Till June ten.
June ten?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion to continue? Okay, I have a motion to continue forty-nine dash nineteen, three oh six seven. Then, do I have a, and I have a motion by Jim Akabachi. Do I have a second?
Second by Veronica Devenice.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, Jacob Morrison.
Jim Akabachi, aye.
Veronica Devenice.
I. All right, Veronica.
Veronica Devenice, aye.
Nazir Al Qalasi, aye.
Walter Cruz, aye.
Okay, very well. So it's continue till June, uh, June tenth, two thousand twenty. Uh, we have a discussion, twenty-six ninety-five Cranberry Highway Hayes. Notice to appeal the building permit. Who's, which one is that, Ken? Any agenda on the public, uh, on the, any other business can discussion? Do you have that in front of you?
Ken, you're muted again. I see your mouth moving, but we can't hear you, Ken.
Yeah, it's probably better that way.
Oh.
Let me see if I have something in the folder.
Well, this is Hayes, you come on.
Oh, okay, okay. This is, uh, next to Shanigan?
Shannon.
Shannonigan?
Oh, yes.
Okay, this is, okay, this is the property next to Shannonigan, and that's something to appeal the building permit? I guess that's the neighbor of Shannonigan, and they wanna appeal the building permit.
Here's, here's the letter. I found it.
Okay, you wanna read, read it quick, Ken?
It says, please accept this letter as a notice to appeal to building permits according to provisions of MGL Chapter forty-eight, section fifteen. Both permits are for a property located at twenty-six ninety-five Cranberry Highway. Permit number da-da-da-da, issued to Patrick Tropiano, and, uh, permit number issued to Stephen Hubert. Both permits were issued on a property which is in violation of setback requirements and which is also infringing on property owned by the estate of Alice Lake, for whom I, I am a co-administrator and property manager. The owners of the business Shenanigans and of the building are aware of the infringement violations. Uh, I think this is a notice to me. It, it's not a legal action though, at, at a
Right.
Anyway, so, uh, it's just information that, um.
All right, Kenny, if you don't mind, can you reach out to Hayes and ask him to file a formal, uh, formal public hearing to deny?
Sure, I'll do that.
I guess we need to, uh, to, to revoke the building permit issued by the, uh, by the building inspector, right?
Uh, I, I think that's, that's her and her lawyer's determination about what they should do.
Right, because I, I believe the person has a permit to build something and they're appealing, so they're gonna have to. Yeah, they appeal the building department or the, the building inspect, commissioner. So they're gonna appeal the building permit to us, but they have to specify where they're appealing.
Exactly.
You're gonna have to reach out to Mr. Hayes or Mrs. Hayes and, and, uh, inform her that she has to appeal properly with the public hearing. If you don't mind.
All right, will do.
Thank you very much. Uh, anything else anybody would like to add? Be, before I go forward, does anyone, I'm sorry, I cut everyone short. And on the, to appeal the building permit, twenty-six ninety-five, does anybody has a question on that?
Uh, Walter Cruz, I don't have any questions. I'm very familiar with what's going on over there.
Oh, okay. Jake?
I've got no questions.
Jim, you know that, do you know what's the story? They built something, they're saying they're encroaching or whatever, but if we don't have access in front of us, we cannot decide, right?
We know, right now, that's about it.
Exactly. Veronica? Exactly. Veronica?
There were no special permits of variances given, right? This is just a standard building permit that they're appealing.
Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, uh, as far as we know, they're appealing building permit, but we need the facts in front of us to act. So they have to formally apply to turn down the decision of the building commissioner. It's gotta be a public hearing. Everybody understand?
Yep.
I'm good.
Veronica?
Yes.
Okay, Walter, you good, right? You understood it, right?
Yes.
Okay, very well. So can we reach out to Hayes and explain to them they have to file a regular public hearing? Okay, anything else? Uh, anybody would like to add?
Any improvements you, you want on the meeting format?
You're asking the wrong damn horrible computer, so I. Jimmy, anything you want to add? Or, or somebody answered this?
I, I had a comment.
I only know how to read my email. That's it, pretty much.
Um, yeah, I was thinking that at the beginning of the meeting, we should just let, um, the audience also know that they have a mute button on the lower left and just tell them where it is. Because there was a few times that somebody's phone was ringing and all kinds of stuff. And I don't know, but they knew that they could mute their own background.
We'll, we'll try to get a little more information out.
Okay, very good.
On, on the mute issue, if I may. Whoever's hosting this session can mute all microphones. And I think that we ought to do that and individually turn the on. You can turn them back. You can do them all. Then if somebody wants to try, then you're gonna touch the bottom left-hand corner to unmute it.
And it probably works good. Okay, very well. Uh, okay, so that being said, I guess, uh, we did good. Very good timing and, uh, I guess we're gonna call it a line.
I have a, I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to adjourn.
And I, Jim Akabachi, do I have a second?
Second, Jake Morrison.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Veronica Devenice.
Aye, Nazir Al Kolasi.
Jim Akabachi, aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Walter Cruz, aye.
All right, very well. Thank you very much. Make sure all of you take a right ride with forty-nine nine nine nine. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.